You got me all nervous. I'm like, oh no, what did I do here?
You got me all nervous. I'm like, oh no, what did I do here? That was funny, that it changed like this. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. First on the agenda is our invocation, and so tonight we have Mr. Abraham Breier, the chairman of the Jewish Community Council of Casa Grande. And if you would like to, if you're willing and able, if you would like to stand, it will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. I'm Mayor Potem Herman. So, Mr. Breier, oh, there he is.
Thank you, Honorable Lisa Fitzgibbons, Mayor of Casa Grande, and members of City Council for inviting me here tonight. It's really a privilege. My name is Abraham Breier. I'm the chairman of the Jewish Community Council of Casa Grande and president of Congregation Kahal Hasidim under the leadership of our esteemed Grand Rabbi, Abraham Rabbinowitz. I'm also the executive director of the local Hitzheim Schools for Boys and Girls. As such, I'm honored to accept the opportunity to perform the invocation and prayers today. Today's prayer is dedicated to our most esteemed friend, mutual friend, I guess, Mr. Scott McEwen. You can be a citizen, you can be a citizen of Casa Grande and not be touched by his passion to integrate, unite, and help build this beautiful city. Let us pray for Scott's speedy recovery. May he have Rafa Shalema. Honi Amago was a spiritual leader and Jewish scholar. He lived in the land of Israel in the time of the Second Temple. I would say just tell us the following story. During one of Honi's strolls, he noticed a fellow gentleman planting a carob tree. Honi stops and engages the man and asks him, "How long does it take for this tree to bear fruit?" The man replied, "70 years." Honi ponders and probes the individual. "Are you certain that you will live another 70 years? Will you live to see the fruit of your labor?" To which the fellow retorted with great insight, "I was born into a world of carob trees. Someone planted them earlier," the man explained, "that he is planting for his descendants, just as his ancestors did for him." The story illustrates the importance of intergenerational responsibility and the connection between the past, present, and future. Honi's subsequent realization highlights the long-term impact of our actions and the need to consider the consequences of our choices. The story touches upon the themes of sustainability, community, and reconnectness of life. Today, it is our obligation in the decisions we make and the actions we take to likewise be planting trees for our children and grandchildren. May the Almighty God bestow on you and grant you the wisdom, desire, and ability to serve and lead wisely. May the Almighty bless you with a capacity to make intelligence though difficult decisions. May all blessings follow. And let us say, amen. Again, I thank you for inviting me, and I thank you for listening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Abraham, and thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with roll calls. Let's see, Adriana's... Okay, we have Councilmember Badillan is not here with us this evening. He's sick. So if we can get a motion to excuse his absence.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so Adriana, if you can accept for the record that everyone except Councilmember... Um, sorry, Badillan. I know. So, okay. Do we have a motion? A motion, please, and a second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would like to move approval of the minutes for the City Council regular meeting of May 5th, 2025, and except for the record, the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission of April 3rd, the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting of April 3rd, 2025, and except for the record, the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission Meeting of April 1st, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, so if we can, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Pass the minutes. Claims against the city, D1.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for April 30th, 2025 through May 13th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting, agenda approval. So, is there anything, any changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff is asking you to remove item G8 and G9, which is under consent agenda, from tonight's consideration. We've got some modifications we need to make to the IGAs, and we'll bring those back.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Would you like to consider the reports before the...
Yes.
Study, or not, what do we call it, executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be the only other change. So if we can get a motion?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to accept the agenda as presented with the exception of removing item G8 and G9 from the consent agenda and moving item N reports before item M executive session.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. There's no special presentations this evening. So next is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in a normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull besides those two items, G8 and G9? Oh, okay. Anyone from staff or the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of G8 and G9.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second for the consent agenda with G8 and G9 removed. If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. And if anyone would like to come up and address the council, I know I have one speaker card. We'll start with that. So, let's see, Jerry Scheider from St. Vincent de Paul. If you can come up and give your address, please, Jerry.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak. I apologize for not being here last week. I guess I missed one heck of a meeting. My goal tonight is simply to pass on information, information I would have addressed last week. Most of you know, we've been around St. Vincent de Paul. I don't think I introduced myself. I'm Jerry Scheider, President of St. Vincent de Paul. Our conference started in 1988. We're one of 4,000 in the United States, and we are all independent. We are a 501(c)(3). Our goal is to provide support for those that are housed or those who are not housed. We have seen a lot of growth. We are open, our pantry is open five days a week for three and a half hours each day. In that time, in April, for example, our food pantry served to the housed individuals, we provided 660-some grocery carts of food. In addition, the housed also received approximately 700 food boxes. In addition, the housed folks also received an additional 300 family bags, food bags. The unhoused, who can come weekly, as opposed to the housed, only come once a month, the unhoused weekly visitors received approximately 600 weekly snack bags. Altogether, total value of all that food in the month of April alone was a little over a quarter million dollars. When I compare that to five years ago, the growth has been approximately 200 to 400% in those categories. It's not like we're out there looking for more. They are just happening for various reasons. I'm sure the council is aware of many causes. I have opinions as well, since we deal with them every day. I believe one of the sources is the breakup of the family unit. It's no longer as functional as it was. It's no longer as functional as it was 60-some, 70-some years ago, and we're seeing the effect of that today. So what's one of the factors that causes the breakup of the family unit? In my opinion, is the lack of religious focus. They have no guide. From that, we have seen many folks who have become addicted, many folks who are homeless because of various employment reasons or other economic reasons. My goal is not to solve anything tonight. That's one of the goals that I look forward to working with the council on. We'd love to participate in any future activity brought forward to the council, especially the two members you're adding. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And if you could give your name and address?
Nancy Wood, 503 Speckle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm just here tonight just to kind of give an FYI of information about the summer and the things coming up. We have our graduates graduating from high school, and we have upcoming graduations. And I'm happy and congratulating all the people and their success and their forward thinking of what they're going to do from here on. And one of the things that I've had a passion for is the burrowing owls that live here in Casa Grande. I'm just a resident. I just volunteer. I don't have anything associated with any other places, but they became a passion when they were in need, and I just have kind of filled that gap as I can. And one of the things is Vista High School is going to be having their graduation, I believe, Thursday. And there's five families of burrowing owls that live in the burms and such along Arizona Avenue, a road, and one in a pipe that's at the southeast end. And so that, when people are celebrating, graduating, and coming to and from with the families and graduates, if they can just be careful and watch out for those areas in the wildlife for the owls, and enjoy their night, and be happy, but be careful and aware of that they're there and living there. So five families could have, you know, they could lay eight eggs, and so you times that, times five, which is a lot of little, you know, a lot of little owlets that could be born, and if they are impacted, then we lose that. And the owls in the area have been pretty impacted by our growth. And since I've lived here, I've seen a fairly substantial decline in their ability to cope with the people and traffic and cars and pesticides and things. This is not just a local problem. It's all through the states. It's, it's just, you know, we got to take care of our wilderness and our wildlife around us, or we'll end up losing it. And one of the things that I think of forward is that I have, you know, my own children and then grandchildren, and they will hopefully have children, and I hope that in the future that they can enjoy the wildlife and the benefits that we share with all the things on our planet. So just a reminder to think about all the other things around us, you know, the wildlife and other people, and just be cautious and careful and take care of everyone else. And peace for a quiet and happy future for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. So we are K1.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a sidewalk variance request, exemption request, along 11th Street and First Street. The first map here is a little overview of the location, and here are where the sidewalk exemptions are being requested from, on 11th Street, which is north of the site, and First Street, which is a little south of the site. Per Section 1532-120 of our city code, it requires development to provide a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to public roads. And a little background on the site, the site is zoned I-1, and there's industrial to the south, however, there is residential to the north. There is no sidewalks in the median area, however, there's opportunity for sidewalks to be added to the adjacent neighborhood as redevelopment occurs in the future. So here is the site looking east with 11th Street on the north and First Street on the Also, per the code, there are two exemptions to not provide sidewalks that can be done administratively when it's in a rural area, and then when it's in a heavy industrial zone, which is I-2. This site does not meet those two requests, however, also per the code, it does allow council to make modifications to that as well. So that is why we're here tonight requesting this. So staff, the planning department is a proponent of providing sidewalks in all areas of the city, however, staff is aware of the site constraints and the uniqueness of the area, and we thought a good compromise for this site would be to support a sidewalk exemption along First Street where there are other industrial users. However, staff believes that sidewalks should be provided along the north side where there is a neighborhood. Typically, sidewalk develops, sidewalk systems develop on a site-by-site basis, and with this in mind, staff feels that this request to not construct sidewalks along First Street should be approved, but denied along First Street. So tonight's options for City Council is to approve the request as presented, require sidewalks along 11th Street, and allow for exemption on First Street, approve both exemptions, by approving both exemptions, no sidewalks would be constructed on either streets, deny both exemptions, by denying it, it would allow for sidewalks to be built on both streets, or the other option is to table the requests. This is kind of different, unique requests. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight also to address the council if he'd like.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any questions? Comments?
What is, what is on the east side of this piece of property where it backs up to, is there a road there?
No, there is no road there. It backs up, so on the north, let's see if I can get another picture a little better. So on the north side, there's houses, and then to the south, it's another industrial site.
Okay.
Along the east side.
Yeah, it just backs up to houses.
So these are two parcels that will be combined through this process, through the planning process.
Okay. And if I could just make a statement, I lived in a neighborhood where new houses were built and contractors sought a sidewalk exemption to where they only had to put the sidewalk on one side of the street. And I cursed that every day I lived there, because it was, it was to save a few dollars, and it was really, when you would get to portions of the neighborhood where that existed, you had to cross the street to get on the sidewalk, otherwise you were walking in a little path that was right up against people's block wall. Overall, I think it's a bad idea to give an exemption on the sidewalk, because we know there's people that live in these nearby homes that are going to have kids that go for walks, and that would be a very nice walk, to walk down those streets and come back to your house. So I'm going to be a no vote on it.
Thank you. Any, go ahead, Matt.
Are there sidewalks on the north side of 11th Street?
No.
There is not.
What would be the impetus for making that happen? That'd be a city project that at that point...
So when the, see, there's a vacant parcel on the, would it be the northeast corner of 11th Street and Schultz? So once that is developed, it would be required to put in sidewalks at that point, and then it's just as redevelopment occurs, sidewalks are done on a site-by-site basis.
And what's the zoning on this piece?
This is I-1.
I-1.
And it's R-1 and R, or, excuse me.
I know you said earlier, I apologize.
No, it's R-2 for the most of the neighborhood, however, that corner piece is actually R-1A, which is single-family. So just to, and then just to clarify what staff's recommendation is, is to require the sidewalks on the north side, adjacent to the neighborhood, but allow for the exemption on the south side where the industrial area is.
How does the applicant feel about that?
The applicant's here, right?
Yeah, the applicant is here and can address that. Their, the request is for both exemptions, but I think they would be okay with staff's recommendations.
Hi there.
Hello.
If you can give your name and address, please.
Yes. My name's Nick Maxwell. I'm a civil engineer. I live on 238 West Bobcat Court in Casa Grande. The applicant is comfortable with staff's recommendation. We would happily accept that. We believe the sidewalk on the north side, as Jaclyn said, makes a lot of sense for the neighborhood. The sidewalk in red on the south side, up against the heavy industrial zone, we don't believe makes a lot of sense. Thank you. I can answer any other questions as well.
Any other questions?
Is anything going on this property here?
Yeah, it's going to be a storage yard.
Yeah, so there is, I can add one more. There is a major site plan under review for a contractor's storage yard. Typically, these are kind of packaged together, but they wanted to move forward with the exemption first, and then they'll resubmit the major site plan for consideration.
But you're okay with the 11th Street sidewalk?
Yes, we're happy with that recommendation, would accept it.
And no sidewalks on the other side, in the industrial area, right?
Yeah, so it would just allow them to make the site plan more accurate, go in this route.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to vote with the staff's recommendation, just because of the fact that that, just to the east there, there's already a sidewalk in that neighborhood, and that would be just a continuance along that piece of the existing sidewalk that's going from east to west down 11th Street, and I would support staff's recommendation on that.
Jaclyn, that, on First Street, is it, is it pretty well lit? I mean, I know it's an industrial area, but I'm just thinking of your point where you say people are going to be walking around the neighborhood and everything. Is it, is it? No?
I'm not, let's see if we can light it up.
That doesn't look like it.
Right here. It's not a, it, it's a really lowly traveled area. It's not a place really anyone walks to or from anywhere on that street. I don't know if it's lit at all.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Resolution, sorry. Resolution number 5770, a resolution of the County or the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a sidewalk exception for property generally located at the southeast corner of West 11th Street and West First Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
So is the, that one has the sidewalk on 11th Street?
Yes.
In the resolution, yeah.
Yeah. Move, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of resolution number 5770 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Where would the sidewalk end exactly in that picture?
May I?
Just like that. Basically along the parcel, property boundary along the, where the green line is shown. It would just stop, like right at that? Okay. Trying to get like a picture of it in my mind of like the sidewalk just like...
Ending.
Ending.
It would end in an ADA ramp that could then go northwest or north to go on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Oh, so it'd go across that way. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Huddleston?
No.
Mayor Pro Temp Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right, item K2.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is the acceptance of the Florence Boulevard Design Concept Report. I do have a presentation, I believe. I'm happy to present this item on behalf of the previous director, Paul Teis, city staff, and the J2 team to get this project across the finish line. The redesign enhancement of Florence Boulevard is a visionary project that will beautify the corridor, create a sense of place, and increase safety for vehicular and pedestrian As the City Council is aware, the Design Concept Report, or the DCR, is divided into three segments along Florence Boulevard and nearly five miles long. The three segments are the downtown, the midtown, and the freeway segments. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item on March 6 and recommended that the downtown segment remain five lanes and Phase 1 of the project. At your last study session concerning this project on April 7, the council supported the five-lane configuration for the downtown segment recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, the council indicated a desire to move forward with the freeway segment as Phase 1. If the DCR is accepted by City Council today, staff will move forward with the design of the freeway segment. A more technical analysis of the right-of-way and existing conditions, staff may, if necessary, present alternative phasing options for the council to consider. However, by focusing on the freeway segment first, considering the large undeveloped tracts of land in this segment, engineering documents can be shared with developers for improvements when development does occur, potentially providing the opportunity to coordinate our efforts to improve that, to improve that segment. The next few slides are an overview of the three segments. The downtown segment will continue and be four lanes with a continuance enhanced center turn lane. Due to right-of-way constraints, a bike lane will not be included. However, sidewalk widening, landscaping, and artwork will be introduced to the extent The plan also calls for replacing the existing sign at the entryway into downtown with a new, larger sign. The proposed midway zone will remain a four-lane thoroughfare with enhanced median, sidewalk, bike lanes, and bus pullouts. And the freeway zone expands the roadway from four to six travel lanes with a median and turn lanes. Wide sidewalks and a separated bike lane are proposed for the segment. And a new entryway sign that complements the downtown sign, welcoming people to the So next steps, as the council is aware, in the budget proposal for the next fiscal year, approximately $3.9 million is programmed to begin the design of Phase 1, and $250,000 for entryway signage in the downtown and the freeway segment. Staff has begun to develop a request for qualifications to hire an engineer and design consultant to begin the design of phase, of the freeway phase. The scope will be developed indicating that the first deliverable is construction documents for the design and placement of the signs, which will allow construction to proceed. Moving this piece forward first communicates to the public the city's commitment to implementing this project and allocating and allocating resources to move it forward. And of course, throughout this process, we will continue to coordinate with the property owners along Florence Boulevard as the design moves forward. And staff is recommending acceptance of the Florence Boulevard DCR, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Are you raising your hand there? Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Uh, I, my only concern is that, uh, the Casa Grande sign, well, it looks beautiful at night, you know, all lit up with the lights and everything like that. My concern is it being white, the Casa Grande, you know, the, the actual lettering being white during the daytime. Um, I don't know if there's some additional designs that we could consider on the entryway signs?
Absolutely, this is just the first phase, it's really conceptual, so I think, um, we'll work with the design team, whoever that may be. Um, it's a good point that you, that you raise.
I just like it to pop in the daytime as much as it does at night.
We'll, we'll ask them to, to provide a number of options and, uh, and then, uh, decide how we can move forward with.
Okay.
Matt?
I think, uh, that's a great point. And also, just so everyone knows tonight, we're not making any of these decisions tonight, we're just accepting the plan to start. To start the design. To have a lot more outreach to accept those decisions and, and make this plan what people want. And even though we're starting at the freeway, um, that is strategic because it's a lot, uh, there's a lot easier, a, as you pointed out, a lot easier to go on because of the open tracts of land and working with it, and we know all the property owners. And I know that we will start working on the downtown at the same time, but there's a lot more conflicts with property lines and everything, so it's gonna be a little trickier on that end, but I know that we can, we can get it through, so, um, I'm glad to see this happening finally, and thank you for taking up the torch there. Like you had a choice.
Any other comments? No, and I'm sure, Dan, the minute you started with us a few weeks ago, people were talking about this, it was, uh, a lot, a lot going on, so, at that time, so.
It's an exciting project.
No, and thank you, and you know, and I, I did want to thank the, the community. You know, this has been a project that we've been discussing for several years. We've had, um, community meetings and surveys and everything, and so, um, you know, just trying to, kind of, what Matt said, we're only approving the concept design planned at this point, and so, um, we just appreciate all the feedback. We did take out one of the other options, there was option A and option B in the conceptual design plans, but we did take out the option B and stuck with this. Um, you know, we, we did get a lot of feedback and input at that time for the narrowing in the downtown segment to, um, just two lanes. So, um, again, just, you appreciate everyone's input, feedback, and, um, communication, so. And, and appreciate the staff, everything you've done, and are they here, the, the consulting group? I don't, oh, yeah, they're, thank you for everything that you've done for, for, for several years now. So we appreciate it, we're, we're finally over at that finish line, or close to it anyways, so thank you. So, with that, we'll go ahead and move forward, let's see, resolution number, please.
Resolution number fifty seven seventy one, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the Florence Boulevard Streetscape Project Conceptual Design Plan.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number five seven seven one as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item K three, that's you, Larry, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Uh, staff is, uh, asking mayor and council to consider the approval of canceling the regular city council meeting scheduled for July seventh of twenty twenty five. And as the council is aware, um, when the, um, actual regular meeting is scheduled in conjunction with the Fourth of July holiday, many times, uh, we attempt to give the council a break. Uh, I made a promise to you that if we could get the budget information, uh, before all of you and get it approved on June the second, that I felt like we could, uh, forego this meeting. Uh, many cities around the state take, uh, a break during the summer months, we're only asking you to take one break, but with that, we're asking you to, uh, consider council cancelling the meeting of July seventh.
Thank you.
Move to approve cancelling the meeting for July seventh?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying, that was really passed, wow. No messing around on that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I don't think so. So, okay, thank you. Thank you to the staff for getting everything done, so we didn't have to meet on that day, so. Okay, item, uh, let, or L one, is that you, Jacqueline? Okay.
Oh, so this is a minor general plan amendment and zone change request. Uh, the site is located along Casa Grande, Maricopa Highway and the UPPR and Indian Valley Road. It's approximately two thousand two hundred and fifty acres. The first request is to change the current growth area from phase two to phase one. And, uh, the second request is a zone change from, um, Grandy Valley P A D, Grandy Valley North P A D, Urban Ranch, um, to I two zoning. So here's the review criteria for the minor general plan amendment, um, growth areas. Uh, it is covered in the staff report that was provided to you today, and staff finds that all of this criteria has been met. Uh, development of the site is proposed to be developed as an industrial site and is, uh, and will be, um, less intense than the proposed P A Ds that was for commercial and residential development. Regarding the zone change, uh, here are the three reviews, uh, review criteria as well. I'll be covering the two highlighted items in today's presentation, the rest is also in the staff report. So the first reviewer, review criteria is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and other applicable elements. And, and, uh, the site did have a major general plan amendment last year that, um, this council's first saw in December. And, um, again, what, under manufacturing industry, it's to provide and expand the land use areas to accommodate a variety of industries. And action steps is to identify locations where it would be beneficial to increase, uh, manufacturing industry areas within the city and to encourage appropriate and responsible industrial development in appropriate locations. Uh, this, uh, has a large amount of frontage along the UPPR and makes industrial zoning appropriate in this area. And, uh, one of the applicable elements under the land use element, guiding principle number two is, um, community growth should be driven by industrial, corporate office, professional services, financial services, research, and development, and there's similar developments which offer opportunity for higher paying quality jobs. And, uh, the third criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. Again, the city, um, has a high demand for general industrial, and this rezon would expand that available area. Um, area to the south was recently rezoned for a P A D for the Santa Cruz Mine, which would be compatible with industrial uses. And we're seeing the trend, um, to change many of these existing P A Ds out in the west area. That was done in the early two thousands, um, for housing and commercial to manufacturing industry. Uh, again, this is more conducive to the natural and existing elements in this area with floodplains and the railroad there. Uh, regarding the stakeholder process, uh, staff and the applicant met all the requirements. When this, uh, item just came in for review, applicant, applications and review were sent out, um, in February, um, and I did not receive any inquiries throughout the process. At the April third, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for a minor general plan amendment to change the growth area from phase two to phase one. And the second request, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission also voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the zone change request from Urban Ranch, Grandy Valley, uh, North P A D and Grandy Valley P A D to I two with the following, um, condition of record. So happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I had one.
Sure.
There's that little green area in the middle? Yeah.
So that is, um, not owned by this property owner, so it will stay Urban Ranch.
Okay.
Just that lone parcel. That came up at Planning Commission, too.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on this, now is your time to do that. Anyone? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and it looks like we, are you gonna, you covered both for?
Yeah, so there would just be the minor general plans of resolution and then the zone changes and ordinance.
Okay, do I have to open a separate, um, public hearing for the ordinance, or? How should I do this?
Technically, we could have said it was one, but since you didn't make it clear, we'll probably just open one up.
Open one up, okay.
And see if anyone has anything to say about the zoning after the general plan.
So that's, um, we closed the public hearing, so if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number fifty two seventy three point thirty eight, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the city of Casa Grande General Plan twenty thirty as adopted by resolution number fifty two seventy three and as previously amended by amending the growth area from phase two to phase one for approximately two thousand two hundred forty-two acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of Maricopa Casa Grande Highway and Indian Valley Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number five two seven three point three eight as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open up, um, a public hearing for the ordinance for changing the zoning from Urban Ranch, Casa Grande Valley North Land Area Development and Casa Grande Valley Plan Area Development, all to I two on the property located the southeast corner of Maricopa Casa Grande Highway and Indian Valley Road. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, if we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number eleven seventy eight point four six six, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number eleven seventy eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Urban Ranch, U R, Grandy Valley North Plant Area Development and Grandy Valley Plant Area Development, all to general industrial I two on property generally located at the southeast corner of Maricopa Casa Grande Highway and Indian Valley Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve ordinance number one one seven eight point four six six as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, L two.
So this is another, uh, zone change request, the site is located at the southeast corner of Thornton Road and Ash Avenue. It's approximately thirty-six acres. And the request is to change the zoning from I one, Garden and Light Industrial, to I two, General Industrial. Again, here's the zone change review criteria that is covered in the staff report. I'll be covering the first and third one again. Again, that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and other applicable elements. And, um, MI one, under manufacturing industries, provide and expand, um, the manufacturing industry land uses to accommodate a variety of industries, and one of the action steps is to identify locations where it would be beneficial to increase this type of use within the city. And, um, goal of manufacturing industry number three is promote diversified types of industries and uses. And the third criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time. The current, uh, again, there is a high demand for, uh, general industrial land use in the area. Uh, this rezon would expand that available area. And while staff's supportive of expanding I two zoning, uh, the site is an island, would be an island of I two around I one zoning. Um, there's an adjacent food processing plant and is relatively in close proximity to the city's downtown land use category and existing and proposed residential neighborhoods. Um, so we do want to, um, be content of that. And, um, through conditions of records associated with this zone change and during the major site plan process, staff will ensure that appropriate buffers and mitigation measures will be incorporated into the final design to ensure development is compatible with existing and future, um, development adjacent to the site and the downtown area. So with that, we did, um, propose conditions of record associated with this zone change, uh, them being that any storage of volatile or explosive materials shall be limited to no more than ten percent of the floor area, and that no outdoor storage of explosive volatile material would be, um, would pose potential public safety hazard as determined by fire and or building code, and that all outdoor storage shall be screened by a decorative, uh, masonry block wall matching or complementing the principal archer, uh, excuse me, architecture of the site along Thornton Road. And, um, we did work with the applicant on, on these conditions, and, um, they are, um, acceptable of them. Regarding the stakeholder process, um, staff and applicant met all the requirements. Again, we did send out applications in review in January to properties within a thousand feet. And also notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council meeting, I did not receive any comments or inquiries, um, regarding this zone change. So with that, at the April third, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted six one to forward a recommendation of approval for the zone change from Garden and Light Industrial I one to General Industrial I two with the following conditions of record. Happy to answer any, um, questions the council may have.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any questions?
I have, I have one quick question, uh, you mentioned a, a wall being built along Thornton. Um, what about Ash? Are they gonna put a wall on Ash, too, or no?
It would just be for, if there was outdoor screening, um, that would, it would just depend on what their, um, site plan is, but the condition is that a masonry block wall would be along, um, Thornton, just because it's a gateway to the, to the city along from I eight. Um, we would still require, um, any, any screen, additional screening along Ash, and there will be, um, landscaping requirements as well.
Okay.
Is this Daisy? Is that what that is?
Walmart.
Oh, Walmart's to the south, Daisy's to the north.
Daisy is the north, okay.
Yeah, north side.
So neither of them, no concerns, no feedback or anything?
No feedback.
And they, and they received a notification?
Yeah, and, uh, signs were also posted on the site as well.
Right, okay. Okay. No other questions, comments? Okay. If we can get a, where are we, ordinance number, please?
I think you have to open a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, it is a public hearing, sorry, sorry about that, everyone. Um, it is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open it up if there's anyone that would like to speak on this.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, members of the council, Rick Miller, fifteen fifty-nine East Brenda Drive. I'd like to thank Jacqueline and the staff, manager Rains, peer representing the property owner. This is a, a great site for industrial development, city's been blessed with some really good industrial properties. Uh, I personally went out there and picked up about fifteen hundred pounds of trash that's been left over by truckers that are parked along the road out there, and they've really cleaned up the site. Uh, they're looking forward to, to developing this site, which is actually very ready, a ready-built site. There are very few of those that, uh, have the amenities in place to support this kind of industrial activity. We encourage your support for the rezoning, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now if we get an ordinance number.
Ordinance number eleven seventy eight point four six seven, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number eleven seventy eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial I one to General Industrial I two and property located at the southeast corner of Thornton Road and Ash Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of ordinance number one one seven eight point four six seven as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item L three, well, Jacqueline, busy tonight.
So the last item before you tonight is a zoning code text amendment. Um, there was, there's, uh, two requests for this one, it's to remove the corner lot with exception. Currently, the code requires a two-hundred-foot lot with, for corner. Um, currently, the code requires a two-hundred-foot lot with, for corner lots in the B-two, B-four and commercial office zoning districts. Um, the request is just to make it a hundred and fifty feet, um, like all their lots in the B-two, B-four and commercial office zoning districts. And then the second request um, is really just a cleanup. Um, when we rewrote the chapter seventeen fifty-six parking and access, it referenced um, zoning codes seventeen fifty-six zero nine zero and one hundred in the, in those sections, B-one, B-two, B-three, B-four, I-one and I-two. And they were removed in that coding, that rewrite, so it's just basically a cleanup of referencing the access management standards. So, just so it's all clear for everyone. So just a little bit more detail on um, this um, exception. So you can see in that outline, currently, it requires a two-hundred-foot lot with requirements and then what the normal one hundred and fifty is. So it's just allowing more lots to either be rezoned to allow for um, so, allow for commercial development, um, rather than, and just having that flexibility in, for infill in our um, business and commercial office zoning districts. And then again, it's just um, references the cleanup of uh, seventeen fifty-six zero eight zero through seventeen fifty-six one hundred. These will be listed as reserved um, for future tax amendments. Um, so with that, at the April third, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted seven-zero to forward a recognition of approval to city council for the following zoning code text amendments. Um, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay. He said, thanks for not reading all of it. So, um, okay, so this is also a public hearing. So if there's anyone that would like to come up and discuss this, we'll open the public hearing. Okay, no one, so we'll close the public hearing and if we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number thirty-four sixty-four, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending title seventeen zoning relating to access requirements and corner lot widths, establishing the separability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve ordinance number three-four-six-four as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hueston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move up reports before we go into executive session. So who would like, who would like to start? Let's see if we get a volunteer.
I don't really have any reports, but I'll just say, look, uh, be careful, Memorial Day weekend this weekend is coming up, everybody have a safe weekend.
You volunteer, all right, good. Thank you.
No reports.
Okay.
I do.
Good.
Okay. Yeah. So last Wednesday, I got to represent the city and the mayor um, at the run for the wall at the Elks Club on uh, Wednesday evening. And we had almost three hundred motorcyclists come in riding from California en route to the Vietnam Memorial Wall in Washington DC. And we stood, uh, the Elks Club does it for them, the Elks riders, and they feed them, they pull in, have parking, they have a nice, they had chicken fried steak dinner for all of them and drawings and presentation, and it was really great. And it was the thirty-fifth annual ride and the fiftieth anniversary of the end of Vietnam War. So it was very meaningful for, for a lot of them, because we had Vietnam veterans there as well as, as younger people and older people, and they were all riding motorcycles, they had dogs on motorcycles, all kinds of stuff. It was really neat to see them all come in. And the uh, fire departments were there at the ladders and had the American flag over the street and a lot of volunteers. So it's really neat uh, community activity and, and really fun to see. And it's their first stop and I welcomed all of them to Casa Grande.
Thank you.
And that was the day that it was uh, cooler. And I said, you know, we got this just for you guys. I told them the mayor ordered it, so it was all good.
Yep.
Yep. And then uh, Saturday, we had the youth commission interviews, interviewed twenty-five kids for sixteen positions. Um, this is a long day, I wanna thank uh, Adriana and Yvonne in the clerk's office for helping out with all that stuff and appreciate it. And one of our advisors is going to be having a baby soon, so one of our graduating seniors now is gonna help us be an advisor. So that's really neat. And she's super organized, so I can really use that help. And then uh, you know, we had a sad moment with John Cashner last week, we lost him. And we were here in meetings at city council, at the city hall right before that end, uh, the week before as well. And up to the end, he was fighting for kids to play sports for free. And the city, the schools and the community working together to provide those opportunities for kids, 'cause he knew how important it, it was for youth to have something to do, um, especially play sports, organize sports or even pickup sports. And he was advocating um, very heartily towards the end in a very good way. He was very passionate about his belief in that. And you can read how many schools he worked at all over the state, even in Pennsylvania in his football career. But uh, we truly lost a great advocate for the, for the community. He was serving as the athletic director at Vista Grande interim this year. So he had a lot of plans, but hopefully that, I know that'll be carried forward and, and I just wanna express how much passion he showed for the youth, um, sports and athletes in this town, as well as all the kids, just to have an opportunity to be a better person. So uh, he will be missed for that.
Thank you.
He was my coach. Uh, the memorial service will be on May the twenty-ninth at Vista Grande High School, starting at three PM.
Thank you.
No report, thank you.
Okay, back up.
I just wanna say congratulations to all of the graduating seniors and the aetherators that are promoting, just such an exciting time.
It is. Stay safe to everyone. No, and you know, Matt, I did want to um, comment on the John Cashner again, you know, we did lose, you know, a, a leader, a friend. I've known him, you know, in high school, I, he wasn't my coach, but I've been playing football, but um, but he, you know, my husband, obviously. So um, but it, and, and you're right, he was, he was fighting for kids and youth um, that day. We had a meeting and I just wanted, literally just finished that meeting. And so I just also wanted to, you know, man, I'm sure that's very difficult to witness. And so you and Danny and your, you know, immediate, you know, response and actions into our emergency personnel that responded immediately, you know, the family is forever grateful. It was a very, very sudden um, situation, you know, and, and, and shocking to everyone. So they are extremely grateful for um, the city staff and, you know, our emergency personnel that did everything they could. So it's just still, it's still shocking. Again, you know, that he, he promoted and advocated for every kid in this community until that, I mean, literally, minute, minute, minutes. So um, so thank you. So um, you know, there's definitely, you know, a lot going on with graduations, it's exciting. I went to Pep Tech's graduation and, you know, we talk so much about kids going on to college and it was exciting to see this group of kids that are literally going into the workforce, that are looking for jobs here, local, and are excited about the different opportunities that we have with the, the many industrial um, employers that we have here in town. And with that, you know, I've been tagging along and Richard Wilkie, is he here today? Um, Richard, um, and I have been tagging with him, meeting with some of these companies and we are going tag teaming and just kinda finding out what's going on in the, in their industry and their companies as far as expansion, you know, any concerns that they have. And um, you know, and of course, it's workforce, you know, workforce development and the CTE programs are really, really important for some of these industrial, um, you know, um, companies that are here. So Hexil was one that we met with, Triumphit, we're meeting with um, next week. Um, let's see, who else did I meet with? Um, Lectalis, that does the, the yogurt company, been meeting with Banner a couple of times, APS. So we're just, you know, just trying to get feedback from them. And of course, we have this whole thing with the childcare issue that, that's going on all over the country and um, how we're in a crisis with childcare. So we've been working with those companies also to get feedback and surveys on what they're experiencing with childcare and getting with the childcare task force to come up with solutions. So um, Richard's been really, really good spearheading that as well as um, meeting with, with these different companies. So we're meeting on a regular place basis, so I appreciate that. Um, we're, I'm sure you guys have seen the letter that we finally did get the CDBG block grant, so I'm sure Mary Allen is very excited about that. We were waiting, we didn't know what the funding was gonna come in at, and it looks like it was four hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. I think it's just a little bit above last year, is that right, Larry? A little bit above la- last year. So at least, you know, we're happy with all the cuts that are going on nationally, we just weren't sure where that was gonna come in. So I'm sure Mary, um, and you know, the staff are excited to see what's going on there. Um, let's see, a lot of grand openings, which is exciting. It just shows all the different amenities that are coming into town. You know, we had Jersey Mikes, you know, the Desert Keys, um, that is the locksmith in town. Blossom Media is opening a new building, that's coming up, this, that's this week. Waste Management is next week and NRS Logistics is also next week. So a lot of grand openings, please look at the calendars if you guys can come, we'd love to have you participate. Um, Memorial Day is this coming week, there is a ceremony at the cemetery. Um, and Monday at nine AM, if any of you would like to attend, it's really a beautiful ceremony. So um, please feel free to, to join us if you are in town. And um, let's see, oh, and you probably have noticed, um, I just wanted to compliment the PIO team, you know, they are just working so hard, just trying to get more and more information out, accurate information, sharing information. They're doing the city council recap videos. And so we're just trying to make sure that we are getting, you know, messages out on what's happening in the city council meetings. And they did a great job last week with the bond um, discussion and they're attaching links to the meetings for people that aren't going. So, you know, again, I think it's just all about sharing information, you know, being transparent and getting people involved. And so they've been just working so hard um, to get, get all that out. So I think with that, I, I suppose that's it for now, um, graduations, yeah. So congratulations to all the graduates out there and happy Memorial Day. So that's it, so we'll go ahead and if we can move to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you everyone for coming.